Okay, uh, let's reconvene. Our operator there? Or Terry?
Are you feeling an odd breeze underneath?
It does feel a little chilly here. But I don't feel current though, but...
Okay, all right, we're gonna reconvene meeting and, uh, pick up where we left off and our public hearing is still open. So, is there anybody out there who wishes to speak on this matter? Who has not, come forward, just give us your name for the record, please.
Uh, Megan Keough, I'm a Brisbane resident. And it's been really interesting. I went on Saturday to view the building with all of you and I really enjoyed it. It was great to talk to everybody and listen to everybody's opinions and what they, uh, you know, what we were looking at. I come back to looking at, and I really appreciate the architect that came in, the original design. I thought that was very, very interesting, what he did and why he did it. But I still come back to the gentleman, David, who worked in that building for five years and talked about, um, his experience working in that building. Um, I look at myself, who's working with a high-tech company in San Francisco, and it is a very collaborative work experience. Again, this is the inside of the building, not the outside of the building. I've been in sales my whole life in the Bay Area. I've probably been in just about every single building between San Francisco and San Jose, and IBM even further down. And I don't find it that attractive to walking into it. And I can see the design, I think it's interesting. I think that the attractive part is the side up at the water, which does have the flat, the windows. Again, this is subjective, this is all people's opinions. So much of what we've heard is people's opinions. So I'm just giving mine. I see a building that's been sitting there empty for a long time. I think that we can't afford losing that type of revenue, especially in this day and age with, uh, where we are and where we are situated, and the businesses that would really benefit and the business we would benefit as a business community with having, um, a building there and having a company that does take over that building. And I do believe that absolutely, my belief is, we would find a company that would, if we make it, the way that I'm seeing and would like, wish that we would move forward with the original proposal. Because I do believe we will get somebody, we'll get a great company. And that is also going to continue to put us on the map. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Anybody else? Anybody who's already spoken want to speak again? Tom?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak again. This has been very lively and interesting discussion tonight. But, at the end, it's still all about speculation. They could put a billion dollars into that, it's not gonna guarantee any new tenant. There's no guarantees.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
I had a question for the architects while we were on break because, um, one of them said, "Oh, and you'll get to move four feet closer to the windows." And it is changing the interior square footage of the building by taking out the, um, fenestrations. Because though, and so, you know, and it concerns me that we don't know, you know, how it's gonna affect the leads, you know, whether it'll trigger anything lead-wise interior for energy efficiency. Seems like there's a lot of unknown things that haven't been addressed yet, like the increase in the interior square footage of the building and, you know, the, um, whether it's gonna impact the, you know, trigger a the green building ordinance for LEED certified, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, I feel like it, I feel like it's not quite, uh, really hashed out as well as it should be. Especially for making such a catastrophic, um, permanent change, permanent change to, um, a building that's had such, uh, awards.
Uh, John? If you could, you indicated this will not trigger the green building ordinance? Is that, you said that earlier?
Until you understand the amount of square footage that's gonna be involved and I think the only additional square footage that will be gained is on their cantilever windows. The moving the windows four feet closer is actually because you're eliminating the, that's not floor area, it's the, you know, the awning portion of the window. It'll be ribbon glass, you're not increasing that square footage?
Cameron Bassett again. Just to clarify the point, in the pop, what we're referring to is the pop-outs. Currently, there's a shelf that's part of the structure. It comes up about two feet, goes out about four. That will be dropped down.
To be level with the ground?
So the floor area actually is essentially the same. The room doesn't get any larger, it just makes it, you can walk across it. The area that we are adding, some minimal square footage was in the lobby. We're pushing it out a little bit farther. But we've run the analysis and it's still within our parking, um, ratio that we have on site. So, when we're eliminating if we, and our proposal to eliminate the articulated glass, that would essentially take away airspace, not floor area. So that, just to clarify.
Okay. But still, you don't...
Not until we see the extent of the modification that's approved and interior work that might come along with that.
Okay. So that's the great unknown, still.
And typically, again, in a normal process, that comes up through the building permit process.
I see.
And so again, that's when you have the numbers, you have the final calculations and the building official will calculate that.
You're aware of that? Yeah, and we're prepared to do what's necessary with California Green Building Code. There's no part of this process that we would try to defer any of that. We would do what was necessary with our proposal. And then additionally, when you get into the interior improvements with a tenant, we would expect that if they trigger that, they do the same process. And most of the people we speak to about leasing the space are like our architect referred to, interested in LEED certification, and we would promote that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, we are at 10:42. I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
Till?
Till 11:30.
All right, I'll make a motion to extend it till 11:30.
Um, second.
A motion of second to extend to 11:30, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay. Not seeing any more hands, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Okay, let's bring it back for council discussion. Who wants to go first on this?
I'll go first, if you want.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, I'm gonna start off by, um, reading something that the consultant had said, or had written in his, uh, in a report here. It says, "Many critically acclaimed buildings can be trendy and ultimately very popular. Nature, mountains, and bays do not go out of fashion, but buildings often can relative to lights and views. Cribs can applaud a building without any concern for the experience it provides for the occupant and its functionality." And so, um, you know, I'm not an architect, not an engineer, not a designer, but when I go into a building, I, you know, I know whether or not I like, I like it or I don't like it, you know, the feel that I get. When I enter the lobby, I feel cramped. I feel that the space is too small. And that the, to me, the greatest part of the building is the atrium. And that what the applicant is proposing to enlarge that lobby and to open up the space, the view that you would go into the lobby, I mean, into the atrium, totally makes sense to me. And to, you know, to really open up that space. When we were doing the tour and we were on the fourth floor and just looking out towards the west and, you know, having one window that was flat next to another window that was, that had the awning and where you could see the mountain where it was flat and that room just being bathed in light. And whereas the other room, it was in shadow. And the awnings directed your vision towards the parking lot. And I know that wasn't the intent of the architect and it was great that you came here tonight, Mr. Brown, and, yeah, I mean, your building is very creative and, um, you know, it's very well designed from that visual perspective, from the outside. But when I'm in that building, you know, it doesn't inspire me to be a creative individual, part of that team that, you know, whatever company that comes and works in that building would want to experience. And so, um, you know, I think that those windows need to have that change in order to bring in the light and to expand on the views that make that site such a beautiful place. In regards to the, um, you know, the screening up on the roof, I think that's one of those things that you can deal with later in the process. You know, after our tour, I had to go pick up, um, our oldest daughter from gym practice in Emeryville. So I'm heading east, getting onto the Bay Bridge, and there's a tower on the left-hand side, and it has a round component to this very, um, straight-line building. You know, that was the design that the property owners decided they wanted to have in their building. Does it take away from the overall appeal of what you're trying to achieve? Do you know, personally, it doesn't really matter to me. I think it's more important for you as you're trying to market that building. So, um, if you can hold off on making that decision, ultimately in the end, if that's what you want to do, I'm okay with that. In regards to the color of the building. So, yes, you're looking at this thing as really two buildings, trying to market it as a campus. And so, yeah, I, you know, these two buildings, especially 7,000, they've been vacant for a long time. And it is sad to see the 7,000 building start to fall into decay. When we walked into the atrium, we saw the chunks of sheet rock that are on the ground and you look up into the atrium, you see where they're broken off. I mean, there's just, you know, that building needs to be occupied. And we need to have creative people working there, being part of our community. Sierra Point was designed for a reason. You know, it was created so that we would have people working out there. And, you know, I'm really thankful that you guys have taken a chance on our town and out at Sierra Point because that's what was needed to be that spark to hopefully eventually we build out the rest of Sierra Point. So, yeah, I'm very supportive of what you're doing. I think you've put together a very smart and creative plan. And, you know, I look forward to, you know, as a city, trying to help you accomplish your goals. I know that one of, one of the speakers talked about feeling bad about the city spending the $10,000 or whatever it's gonna be and the delay. You know, I agreed to do the appeal because it was important to a couple of my council members. And they brought up very good reasons for why they wanted to have it appealed and have a more thorough discussion. And, you know, that is how our town is. But I felt that the two months that has gone by and the amount of money was worth having the discussion, having us thoroughly, you know, investigate it and ultimately we'll come up with a decision. But, um, I want to thank everybody who's come and given their opinion. All right, that's it, Mr. Matt.
Terry?
Well, I have to say that, um, on my two trips out to the building, one was in, on a hot day that was very bright. We had a difficult time even standing outside on the veranda, talking to one another because the sun was so bright and beating down. And it is obvious that the building is, um, has not been maintained for a while. It's rundown, it's looking shabby, it's got some water leaks. And when we went in and my first impression on going in was that, um, while the interior walls that you first approach when you come in through the side front door, um, are blocking off the entryway to the atrium. And that those are, those interior walls are very clunky. But it was also a building that no one had been in for years, basically. And it was still cool, it still felt fresh in the building. I'm sure they're running some sort of HA, you know, HAVC, but it really, you could feel the difference that the interior space made with the way the lighting was. And when we went up floors, um, you can tell that those offices that have been constructed are obviously not utilizing the space to what an interior could be. It had a different potential if those offices were removed. But I do think that the building is iconic. And I do think that the design elements that are there and finding out, finding out tonight at the meeting from the architect why it was designed that way, I'm really disappointed in our staff report. That wasn't in there, in the architect's report. It wasn't in there. And we shouldn't have to come to the meeting here tonight and find out information, which is why we did an appeal and why we had a consultant come and look at these things. And they were never brought up. We don't know the energy efficiency of the design. We don't know the energy use. There's so many things that we don't know and we weren't made aware of. And we're looking at, you know, the smaller things of whether the mechanical screening should be round or square. And there's so many more important things that have to do with this building, with its architectural history. And, and so I'm very disappointed in what we had to begin with, with our staff report and where, what information we got on the, you know, the consultant's report on what the, what the design changes will mean to the building. It will take it from being an iconic building to making it look like almost every other building. It is very nice that we've, that it's got the atrium. And the thought of opening it up with a big door to bring the inside, the outside in is a great idea if it's feasible. But if you've ever been out there on a summer afternoon when the wind's blowing 40 knots, I don't know how that would work. Previous people who've worked in the building talked about the circular door rotating like a propeller. I can imagine the whole interior being sucked out if the roll-up door on the west side is put up. And those winds pick up quickly. So, it is obvious that the building needs work. It, you know, the leakage, you know, is probably due to being worn and just needing to have maintenance done. But again, without getting into the structural, no one really knows that for sure. The appeal of the building, the shrubs, the landscaping's overgrown for the building. But it's really an incredible building and I just, I don't see where we're improving it with this. I think that if we had, if the building's interior is gutted and the true beauty of what those windows and what the form can do is realized, that there could be other options. So...
So you want to uphold the appeal?
I would be in favor of unfolding the appeal. Because I don't think we have all the information yet.
Ray?
Or I defer to Lori.
Okay.
She doesn't mind.
Sure.
Lori? Ray likes to go last, he's not gonna go last tonight.
No, no, the mayor has that.
Yeah, so, you know, I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight and especially the original architect. I agree that, you know, what was lacking in the consultant's report, I think really did come out, and I'll be at it a little bit later, but through the, you know, through the words of the original designer. You know, going into the building, my impression was, you know, it was pretty striking that, you know, if we're looking at it from a modern perspective of wanting to use the space in the interior of the building, like when you were standing towards the, I guess up on the fourth floor and you backed up, you know, the views just diminished up to a point where you could barely, if not at all, like see outside the window. And, you know, it was interesting to hear the architect, Mr. Brown, talking about how the light refraction was intended to draw light in about 12 to 14 feet. Well, that may have worked for the intended use, but I just don't see that being designed in today's marketplace, you know, with it, I see it diminishing the light towards the interior and, you know, obscuring the views. So, I would be in favor of approving, of affirming the planning commission's approval. And I would, I would be in favor of, you know, doing that in its entirety without any of the proposed modifications by the consultant. You know, I think what the consultant has brought out was that, you know, the atrium is the most significant feature. And so, by enhancing those views to the bay from the atrium, I think that really accentuates the, you know, the iconic nature of the building. And the proposal to expand those pop-out windows and to make them, you know, where you can walk out and get even more of a view, I think that does keep this building from becoming just any run-of-the-mill building. It still gives it flavor. And I think that the ability to add the accent marks makes it more, differentiates it as well. And I really appreciated the comment from David Needham about, you know, buildings in, that companies today need to really think about their brand and their logo. And, you know, if we limit the building owner to keeping the building white, then we're just limiting the possibilities of what type of tenant could make this its home. Excuse me, please let me finish. And, so I don't think it's our place to say what could or couldn't work from a design perspective. I would like to have as much flexibility so that this building can be marketed and, you know, really bring new life to Sierra Point, which is much needed. So as for the, I'm just gonna run through the, the design aspects that were mentioned in the consultant's report. So first, the building entry, you know, I agree that squaring that off makes sense, that it increases the square footage, it gives it more usable space and greater visual connection with the adjacent building. And it would hopefully increase the marketability and prolong the useful life of the building and have it communicate more with the 5,000 building. And I think we really need to view those together because they are commonly owned. And so, we want them to be able to be marketed together as one campus. And as for the angled awnings, as I spoke to that before, I just, I don't see that as an aspect of design that really gives function. You know, the design, the consultant hired by the city said that form follows function. Well, if you look at the current design, I see it as limiting the function. So, I agree that that's a design element that, that would be, if it's modified, that it could breathe more functionality into the space. And the consultant had presented some design alternatives and I found that really informative to, you know, talking with him at the site visit about, you know, what some of those constraints might be for those design alternatives. The first one was having both faces being glass. He noted that that didn't really consider any of the potential buildability. If you have, you know, glass and then glass, I don't know what angle that is, but, you know, there might be wind issues, other feasibility issues. And he noted that that would create some obscurity and warping so that the view wouldn't be the same as, you know, if you have the flat glass and then you continue to still have, you know, the framing, then it's, then you might not be able to see straight through and it would inhibit the view. And then he, the second proposal was to have that, the awning at the top and the bottom and have that merely decorative. And, you know, while that kind of pays homage to the, to the design, it's just, you know, decorative and doesn't have any function. So I didn't see that as being, serving any purpose. And then leaving the skeleton in place, that would also obscure the view. As for the accent colors, as I mentioned, that I disagree with the consultant there, that I think we, it's not our place to say what color the building should be. And that, the comments that it's, in the report, it said that those might be distracting or seen as trendy. And to me, that's just a subjective comment. And really, you know, what I was hoping the purpose of the consultant's report would be, you know, to look at the architectural integrity of the building and, you know, looking at, but, but those comments to me were, you know, really not very substantiated. They, you know, it's not our role to look at the feasibility of whether black paint would endure. But, so to me, that, the consultant, the owner of the building should have the ability to, you know, to put the building, to paint the building the color it wants. And its proposal for 5,000 would be more of a campus feel, so there would be some communication between the two. So, you know, marketing shouldn't be the role of the council. And replacing the circular roof screen, as the consultant mentioned, that, that he kind of was on the fence as to whether, he said he was ambivalent as to whether that was something that needed to be changed or not. So I see that we should, you know, really... So I, I see that we should, you know, really let the applicant decide whether that option, if that option makes sense, whether or not to keep it round or change it. But that's, you know, really gonna be driven by what they think would work in the marketplace. And I wouldn't wanna hinder our, hinder their role. So, you know, my, my hope is that we can keep some of the iconic attributes of the building, but really make it functional. And, you know, it's, we need to have more vibrancy at Sierra Point. And this is really opportunity knocking at our doorstep. And I, you know, I would like to see this move forward so that we can, you know, have that thriving business park that we envisioned Sierra Point to be and that it can, you know, help generate revenue for the city and really bring a mark to Brisbane. Ray?
Okay, Lori. Ray?
I'll try to get closer to the mic here. When I traveled to the building and took a tour with the applicant, Mr. Clapp, I mentioned to him that I was the officiating city official when the Deacon Building was opened. So I didn't meet Mr. Brown, I assume he was there, but I didn't meet him at the time. I do know that seat that he refers to. And of course, we know that the trad, the tragedy of the, of the Deacon family was that a very large percentage of them, you know, before they could really enjoy their wonderful new corporate headquarters, you know, they were killed in a plane crash. And that was, you know, one of the reasons that they can, didn't go on. I think that if that hadn't happened, they might still be there. And the building would have been much better maintained than it has been. So I have this, you know, long history with the building and its role in the community. It, it is our only piece of public art. It becomes a question, I guess, of, of the things that, that drive your priorities. And it just seems to me that the comments of the original architect, that we have a treasure. And I, I still am not convinced that we have to remove the angular fenestration in order to make it acceptable to tenants. That's the one thing that, that you all just haven't convinced me of. If there were a tenant who was saying, okay, I'm, here's my company money on the line, and if you do this, you know, I'll sign up and, and these are all the reasons why, and, you know, that might be a little bit persuasive. But I have to agree with Mr. Heinz that at this point, it, it's just speculation. And you may be right, but you could also be wrong. And if you're wrong, then we've destroyed our, a good part of our treasure, particularly the, the angular windows, which to me really are the, really especially distinctive part of the building. And to lose that, I, I just haven't heard enough arguments to, I just wish that there was some way that you all could work together and the architectural firms and Mr. Brown and the other firm that is, Blitz, I guess it's called, right? Is working with the owner. I, I just wish there was some way that you could figure out something that, that would work, that would not, you know, destroy the, the really distinctive exterior that, that makes that building special. And I could, you know, I'm willing to abandon really all the other stuff. I mean, even though I don't necessarily agree with it. But the one thing I just can't swallow is removing the most distinctive exterior part of the building. I, I just, I'm sorry, I just, I just can't swallow that. I just think it's wrong. And, and I don't think enough evidence or enough persuasiveness has been provided to, to make us go ahead and, and approve that. So that's kind of where I, I come down at this point. And so obviously, you're looking for how I would vote, Clark. It must be pretty evident.
No, I think you're clear.
Yeah, okay.
You know, always seems to be three to two lately with stuff, you know? One way or the other. You know, before the meeting tonight, about forty-five minutes before, I, you know, got one of them phone calls that nobody really likes to receive and found out my sister-in-law had passed away a few hours earlier. So I, I really would like to be home with my wife, you know? But I came here and listened to everything, 'cause that's the proper thing to do, you know, show's gotta go on. I can say some things here that I'm hearing that is agreed, agreed upon. It seems like everybody, you know, everybody in the room is upgrading the atrium with the, with the deck, gutting the interior. And I think the architect here probably hit it on the nose, is really the two things that are most being argued about is the change of the lobby and the outside awning on the south side of the building, if I, if I heard correctly. And, you know, that's really kind of what it comes down to. And compelling arguments. I mean, I, you know, on, actually on both sides, you know, I, you know, hear what you're saying, Ray, you know, I, but I think their argument is, yeah, they maybe can't prove everything, but they're willing to invest a bucket load of money into doing it and they may be wrong. And it's kind of an interesting concept, you know? It's like, gee, you got this group of people saying, nah, you're wrong and you're blowing it and you're gonna ruin the building. You got this group of people saying, ah, you know, it's great, it'll look good, you know? And it's like, really? I think it was said early on, it's subjective, you know, what people want, you know, what, what your taste is. We have a building out there, yeah, it's been vacant for four years, yeah, it's kind of falling apart in, in places and got one next door vacant. Got two vacant parcels out there that have development agreements on it, nothing's happened. What, a hundred and sixty-something acres, a hundred and sixty-seven acre parcel and it's about fifty percent built out with two vacant buildings and some other vacancies and it's kind of desolate, kind of desolate out there, you know? We got a beautiful marina we're doing upgrades on, you know? And it's like, well, what, what's our vision for Sierra Point? You know, do we even have a vision for Sierra Point? Here we are looking at the Baylands, which is three or four times larger than this. And this has been on the table for thirty years, thirty years, thirty years. And look at it. And we're arguing about some folks that want to come and invest in our town, you know? It's like, no, you can't do this, you can't do that, you know, because this is iconic building. And Lori, I think you said it best one time is that, well, it's not a museum, you know? Everybody wants to change it. You want to buy it? You know, I mean, sometimes, you know, I, I feel that way, let's buy the building, you know, or something, you know? I mean, the counterargument. I, I know we've invested some money on why we're not functioning at Sierra Point. Why is it not built out? What do we want? What's our vision? And we kind of developed that when we did the hotel feasibility study. All right? And one of the things, you know, Stuart's not here tonight, but he, he'll tell you, he's, he always tells me, the best businesses a city wants are hotels when they're good. Because they're low maintenance and you get a lot of money from them, you know, and transit occupancy tax. Here, we did this hotel feasibility study on a site out there that is slated for a hotel. And the one thing that really came through crystal clear was the type of tenants that you want to attract are corporate headquarter tenants. Now Theodore Brown said he designed this building for a corporate headquarters. Eric Clapp said, we still envision it as a corporate headquarters. We're just making some changes for modern things. And I think that's what we want, is corporate headquarters. To go with our vision on the plan of the hotel feasibility study, to try and bring people in. And we got a group of folks and they might be nuts, I don't know. We're willing to invest a whole lot of money to make it into a campus, to try and bring that type of thing. I think, you know, there's times where we need to bite the bullet as a city and form a partnership. Because one of the things that we've done on the economic development subcommittee when I was there, we've invited some of the brokers in and found out, you know, Brisbane's got a really bad name out there with the brokers because we're like anti-business. Well, we're not anti-business, but, you know, sometimes it could sure seem that way, you know, when we make decisions that we make, you know? And, and I certainly understand, you know, the emotional argument of, of not wanting to change something that looks really great. There actually may be a solution here. And that's what we gotta find. If, and I'll ask the applicant this, because the first thing you guys are gonna do is gut the inside? You're not gonna tear out the windows, you're gonna gut it, right? Is what, is, is, and I want to ask you, if you want to come up, what is your, what's your logistics on it?
Well, for us, what's important to do is to have the overall vision approved so that way we can go back to our investment committee and get approval for, which has already been granted for, for the plan under consideration.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure where this is leading towards, but, you know, the initial things that we will do, we'll be planning, we'll, we'll, we'll be gutting, then we will re-orchestrate the outside window system. But we only can move forward with doing the, the total investment plan if we already have a path to be able to, to be able to do the whole thing. So we, we can't really go to the point of...
No, I understand that. I understand that part. And I guess my, my point is, is you get the approval, and if you got the building and then you look at it, kind of like what Mr. Brown was saying, and you decided, hey, you know, this isn't so bad, looking at it from this angle, because really it's subjective. And what if you wanted to change? What if you wanted to keep it? Because you're gonna put a whole lot of money in it. And, and so, you know, John, my question is, is maybe to Ivan, if we approve it, give them your approval, because I'm ready to approve it, and I, and I can count to three. I went to school in Brisbane, so if we approved it and they went in and decided to gut it and then they took a relook at it and said, you know, we don't want to remove these windows now. We think that it has a particular function, that it was visionary, it, you know, was all these things. What then? Could they change? Would they have to go through this whole, all over again, or what?
Well, typically, what you're approving through the design permit are modifications, one through six or whatever you approve. If they choose not to vest one of those elements and leave it as is, typically, the approval is to allow somebody to do something, it doesn't require them to do it, is the short answer. So it allows them to make that change, it does not require them to make that change.
Okay. And then I, I guess Ray, go on with yours, is, is, they haven't proven that yet to you, but, you know, it'd be nice to, to see what you guys think afterwards. Because I'm, I'm ready to approve, give you the approvals, okay? And I think three of us are ready to, to move forward with this. Because I'm not convinced to not do it because it's been vacant, because we have this vision of bringing in these corporate things. And you got a whole lot of folks with a lot of new energy that really want to do something. And I don't think they want to come in and shoot themselves in the foot, unless you guys are nuts, right? So I...
We definitely try to be very thorough and thoughtful investors and we try to do, improve real estate whenever we have a chance to acquire it. We have a, a long track record.
And, uh, thank you, Gary, for doing your peer review report, because we did request that. And, you know, our, our peer came in and said, supported it. So really, it's, you know, just like everything else that goes on in Brisbane, there's those who do and those who don't, and, you know, and we fall in the middle. And, you know, that's what happens sometimes when you're the mayor, is you decide what's, which way it's gonna go. Ray, you know that all too well.
Oh, yes.
But I certainly appreciate all the discussion that we've had on this. You know, I mean, it was, it was very enlightening and, and Theodore Brown, thank you for coming out, taking the time and coming out and describing, you know, your whole vision and everything like that. And, you know, as Ray was saying, maybe you guys can, you know, come together on something and, you know, if you have the approvals, you know, maybe something does change there. And I, I think that's probably the best that I could give.
Just wanted to respond to Ray. You know, you had said that, you know, the sticking point for you is the, the angled windows. And one thing I noted, you had talked about the general plan policies, and you said 136, I believe, was to encourage maintenance and rehabilitation of structures. And, you know, we're not sure, we're not certain as to the causes of the leakage in the building, but it was noted on the tour that the, the leakage on the, the windows is only occurring on the angled windows, not on the other side. So, you know, it, there, there's definitely some problem there and, you know, it might, we don't know if it's the design or the maintenance or whatever. But I believe that, you know, by, by doing these changes, that that would further that policy of addressing the long-term maintenance and rehabilitation of the structure. I don't know if that'll sway you one way or the other, but I wanted to make that argument.
I don't think it will, but... I'm looking over here at Ivan. So Ivan, you're kind of seeing where this is landing. So it's three to two, three to support, uphold the planning commission's decision and I think two to uphold the appeal. Or I guess three to deny the appeal, so...
To reverse the planning commission.
Yeah.
I think that the sole question that I wasn't able to kind of glean from what the discussion was, was, you know, there is a draft resolution that's attached here and the draft resolution, you know, incorporates in exhibit A, the two modifications that had been proposed by the consultant. I did hear Councilmember Lou said she would be in favor of affirming the planning commission decision without any modification. But I didn't hear you or Councilmember Lance...
I, I would second that. So if that's Lori's motion, I, I would second that.
So to take out the red line and have it as a, as originally drafted.
Well, I, I would certainly allow the flexibility, especially when you go to do 5,000, if you do want something to kind of match it cohesively and to try and marry, you know, two, two buildings that are, you know, kind of opposites. So, you know, I would, I would remove that also, so. So, you know, I would, I would remove that also, so...
So then the motion would be to affirm the planning commission decision without any modifications?
Correct. So that's my motion, I suppose.
What, a motion?
Sure.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Opposed.
Okay, three to two. All right. With that, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.